Welcome to the July 10, 2023 meeting. Sandusky City Commission will have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the political allegiance. Lord, be with our government officials and their staff as they deal with the challenges of today. Give them wisdom on how to best represent everyone. Father, we ask that you give our leaders courage so that even when it's hard, they will continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon me, call the room.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinter?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Commissioner, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of June 26, 2023? What is your question?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of the June 26 meeting and dispense for the formal reading.
Back again. Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda items, please step to the podium, share with us your name, address, and your agenda comments. No rush to the podium, I see. We have a public hearing this evening regarding the 2024 tax budget that will be conducted by our chief financial officer, Ms. Reader.
Thank you, Commission President. So we have, per Ohio revised code, section 507, it requires us to do an annual tax budget to be submitted to the county auditor by July 20 of each year. Prior to that submittal to the county, a public hearing must be conducted, which is what we're holding tonight. Failure to submit a tax budget could result in a denial of receiving future local government funds. The tax budget allows the Budget Commission to review the anticipated and historical revenue and expenditures for each fund. The tax department is, I'm sorry, the tax budget is comprised of current year estimated revenue and expenditures, along with two previous years of actual revenue and expenditure figures. The Budget Commission will review the tax budget and generally looks for any over or underfunding. Once approved, the tax budget helps determine funding for the next year. As a general reminder of the city's budget timeline, the, per the city charter, it requires the first draft of the 2024 budget to be available by November 1. City Commission will need to approve an initial temporary budget for calendar year 2024 late this year, and then ultimately pass the 2024 budget by March 31 of 2024. As stated previously, this tax budget legislation is a requirement by O R C and must be approved annually. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has on the tax budget.
Because this is a public hearing, we'll entertain questions from the public regarding the 2024 budget, as well as commission. No questions to the public. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Fisher-Meister.
I don't, I thought maybe there would be a presentation up there, but I don't have the copy of the agenda. But from memory, I think it looks like '23, we, one, the COVID relief money runs out, right? That goes to zero?
So we received two batches of the COVID relief funds in 2021 and 2022. We have until the end of 2024 to promise to spend those funds, and then until the end of 2026 to actually expend those funds.
Okay, I thought I saw it was zeroed out for projections. And the next I-
For revenue it is.
Pardon?
For revenue, it would be zeroed out.
It's zeroed out on revenue, okay. And then the carryover was up to like 24 million? Does that sound right, 25 million? Residual, or?
So are you speaking of, you're looking at all funds?
Yeah.
Not just the COVID fund, correct?
25 million, and next year, our projected expenses was 127 million, and our projected revenue was 98 million, 95 million?
So this is where it gets very subjective, as far as what is going to be in the 2024 budget. I am currently kind of waiting until we have the next city manager to look at 2024 budget, because ultimately, the city manager is the one that's presenting the 2024 budget. So when we have a city manager in place, and if it's John, great, we'll start working through that as soon as possible. But, so those 2024 expenditures, the only thing that we really know at this point, I know what wages are going to be, as far as what's contractually agreed to, and those are factored in here. But as far as departments and what their wish lists are, and what their requirements are for next year, this is basically looking at previous years and kind of projecting of where we think we will be for the, for 2024.
Okay, so, so your projections are that we'll use up most of the carryover, we'll end up with about 13 million residual of 24, just as a projection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Simply like to note, for the public's benefit, and obviously, all of us are familiar with this, but these estimated unencumbered numbers, this is not the balance in our so-called general fund checking account, the care, the cash balance that we use on a day-to-day basis. These are all funds. These include water and sewer and all those utility money, so the numbers end up being larger than the ones we normally talk about. I just thought I'd clarify that out.
Additional comments or questions? If not, I will declare this public hearing closed. Next on our agenda is an update on the city schools' aquatic center, and that's going to be given, I think, by our superintendent, Mr. Rambler. Mr. Rambler, if you could come up and, we know who you are, but if you'll identify yourself, we'll get it in the record. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. I have a document for each of you, and there's a front side and a backside, but don't flip the backside.
Secret.
Let you guys get those. Do I have to give my address, because I might have to look it up, because I often forget it? 306, I actually am right down there. It used to be at the Sycamore Building, that's 306 East Washington now.
It's good enough.
Just actually moved, so. Daniel Rambler, I'm the superintendent of Sandusky City Schools.
Mr. Chairman, is, is there any way we could get what we're looking at up on the screen, so the public can follow as well?
I don't think we've got that loaded.
Okay.
It's not loaded. We've got a few copies we'll pass out to the, in the attendance, public council.
If you want, I can always send you an electronic one.
I think we can get it on our website. Great.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started, if that's okay. At the top of this, you'll notice that there's some core values. When I came into the district about a year ago now, we, and we were looking at the Aquatic Center. We have an aquatic core team that meets every other week, and we discuss where the Aquatic Center is, what we're working on, and kind of working together to make sure that we're moving that project forward. We wanted to make sure that we examined what our values, what our core principles of the project was, which we listed those there. I think that, you know, anytime you're working on something, that's an incredibly important part of the project, is really identifying what's the purpose of it, what are your values. And those three, I continually tell everybody, they're interchangeable. It doesn't matter what work, put them in, they're very equal to each other. So we're really looking at making sure that we provide for the district aquatics programs, both the competitive swimming, and also like our swan club, and the various programs that are within the aquatics venue. Second, we're looking at providing for community programming opportunities and community accessibility into the aquatic center as well. And then finally, providing swim lessons and water safety for our kids. Having done that previously in my experience, it is astounding the amount of deaths that occur with young people around water, and clearly, we have a significant amount of water in our area. So I think that that is an item that we clearly identified as a significant need, that we need to make sure that we're doing for our young people and our community in general. Some efforts that we've kind of taken as we've gone through, there's been a number of phases, obviously, in this project. Everybody's very knowledgeable of, we've gone through for a number of years. There's been a lot of effort around the aquatics center for the district. I want to come up to where we were most recently. So we recently put this out to bid in May. We did not receive any bids back on the project, and clearly, that was a concerning question that came back to us. Why did we not get any bids? So we talked with our core team, and talked to our architects, and we reached out to the potential people we imagine would be bidding on the project. And we learned that what we had anticipated as the budget for the project was under what those who potentially would bid on it identified that to be. Roughly 20 to 30 percent, around $2 million. So with that knowledge, we had to come back to the table as an aquatic team, as a core team, and really examine where we were and how we were going to fix this situation that was challenging. At that point, is when we went from the two-pole design to a one-pole design, because we clearly had to get everything back on budget. Again, keeping in mind what our core principles were in addition to the budget, but also, we wanted to make sure we were meeting the goals of the project, which are what the community and the district and the families and the students are wanting us to do as well. So to do that, we had to kind of relook at what we were going to do with the Aquatic Center, and how we were going to utilize that space and the money that we have for it. What we've kind of gotten to now, at this point, is that the new Aquatic Center is going to be built within the current pool and expanded probably about 30 percent, is what we're looking at. I didn't bring any photos or drawings with me today, because I want to make sure that we have a really near-completed vision of that before I'm sharing that again publicly, because the last time we did that, we had the two-pole design, then I had to go back and tell everybody that we weren't doing that. So I don't want to keep going back to people and telling them, we're doing this, and then a few days later, I change something, and that gets very frustrating to people. So we, I don't have that for you. I will tell you that within the next couple of weeks, we will have that, because the project is going to move very quickly from this point, and I'll kind of identify that information as we go. With that idea of kind of relooking at what the Aquatic Center was going to be, and the space we were going to use, and the impact that was going to be within the area behind the high school, we decided that we were going to go with a construction manager at risk model for this as well. So we weren't going to bid it out, we were actually going to interview prospective construction managers at risk. We've done that within the past couple of weeks. We selected a construction manager at risk on the piece of paper I identified, that is Mosher Construction Incorporated. They'll now become part of our core team as we're working on this project to start moving forward. Our goal is that we're going to begin the project in August of this year. When I said that the other day, I was talking to my wife and my kids, and I was telling them, we're going to start building this in August. And they're like, Dad, you know, that's like a month. And I said, I know, it's really exciting. People have been waiting a long time for this to start getting to this place, and it's really exciting. The other part is, it's going to be done by December of 2024. So things are going to move really quickly, really fast. And I have Mr. Feick and Ms. Hank in the audience as well, and they're part of the aquatics core team as well. And we meet, and we really work on these things collectively. Some major takeaways that I want to make sure that everybody knows is, one, we're going to continually focus on what the goals of the project are, and that being the, making sure that the project is available for our athletes, and our competitive swim, and our swim programs within the district, teaching kids to swim, and for community accessibility as well. Also, that the funding for the project, because that's a question I get a lot of times, is a, it's a combined effort. The Sandusky Education Foundation has raised a lot of money for the project, and then the district has put in a lot of money as well. That's the backside image that I have, showing the kind of split of funding. 3.8 is coming from the district, and 4.7 is coming from donors and those that have supported this project. Second, or additionally, the, both the foundation and the district were clearly incredibly thankful for all the support we've gotten through the community and through those that have donated to this project. I know from talking to a number of people in the past few months, that people are excited for this to get moving along, they're excited to see progress on it. I know I've had a number of people tell me that as soon as they see the, the building of it, the movement of it, that they're going to be very excited, because they've heard about this for a long time, which I absolutely appreciate. We also share a website email address that people can send questions to. I have a monthly Blue Street Connect meeting where I go to different venues across the city this week, tomorrow evening, actually, I'm at a park, we're going to give out popsicles and talk to people about the pool. I was at Toff's the other day, I spilled ice cream all over myself, but had good conversation about the pool as well. And really, talking about it, sharing the information, very consistent with the information we're sharing, really trying to get people to ask questions too, because I know there are questions out there, and I'm very happy to answer any of the questions. I've had hundreds of ideas about the Aquatic Center. We really do try to think about those, talk about them within our core team. Our architects have looked at a number of potential options that we, people have given us that to consider as well. The things I would ask of everyone is, one, let me know of anyone that's interested to have me come talk to them. I talked to some physicians at Firelands Health a couple of days ago about the pool as well. I'm happy to talk to anybody, anywhere, about the pool. I want it to be very clear, very transparent, and make sure that people have their questions answered. So very happy to talk to anyone about it, and that was kind of my presentation. If there's anything I can answer, because again, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm very happy to.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I met you out at the golf course, and we talked out there. Maybe, could you explain a little bit, so we got a better understanding that we are going to have time, the community's going to have options to come in and use the pool?
Yeah, that, that is an important question, and I think that's something we've talked a lot about, and we actually have created a mock schedule of what that would look like through a school calendar year, of when would the school utilize it, and then when would the community be able to utilize it as well. And when we, when we do that, when we create that framework, about 50 percent of the time, the community has access to that pool. Part of that's going to be, what kind of programs are we offering? What kind of partnerships do we have with other entities? Do, does the hospital want to utilize it for some sort of programming? Any of those types of different partnerships we can create? And also, I would tell you, they're good times. Like, we're not saying that you have 50 percent of the time, it's from 9:00 PM till 3:00 AM. We're not talking that at all. There's a significant amount of time that would be available during the school day that the pool could be utilized, there's time after the school day, plus, depending on the time of the year, because obviously, the swim program and the swim, competitive swimming and swimming programs are specific times of the year, so there's a lot of time that it's available to. So I think that's an important point to keep making to community members, that there is going to be a lot of time that will be available. It's just looking at how do we develop those partnerships with those groups that want to use it? So of course, we can have open swim, but what else could we have too, that is more diverse and unique opportunities for the community too? Is that good?
Yep. Additional questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
You mentioned, one, one is the phases. I recall, one phase was thinking of going with two pools, and, and it looks like this was $2 million over budget. The bids came back. Did you ever get bids for the first, second pool?
No. So initially, when we bid it out, it was going to, it was a, we were looking at a two-pole design, and then we looked at one pool with a multipurpose room. What we've learned is, as the costs keep going up, you know, and construction has gone up pretty significantly in the past few years, we identified pretty quickly that those possibilities weren't going to be there. So early on, we shifted from two pools to a one pool with a multipurpose room, and that's recently where we shifted from that. So, no, we had not, it was being projected out that it was going to be beyond, much beyond the budget to get to that place. So that's where we then looked at this design of having a pool and a multipurpose room.
And, second, you mentioned community use, is, would that be something that would be organized, or you mentioned Firelands physicians, is that something that the elderly could use for rehab, exercise, water aerobics, that type of thing throughout the year?
Yeah, and that's where I go back to, it's, you know, part of the community access is, of course, as a school district, we can offer time. Part of it is going to be what type of programming is going to be available, and part of that will be the partnership with other groups. And we have had others express interest in that. The hospital is one that, you know, makes a lot of sense with potentially rehab or an aerobics event. I mean, there's a lot of different opportunities that I think could be available as we keep moving along and building those partnerships out, and what does that look like?
And, one final question. The, you mentioned hours of accessibility, is this around the clock, 365 days? What kind of seasons you're looking at, days of the week?
Yeah, we built a mock schedule for the entire, like, we looked at it from a school year perspective, as opposed to a traditional calendar year. And so we looked at it for a 365-day year, much like, if you think of, you know, I think a lot of us can think of really easily, is like the football season. Clearly, there's a time that the football stadium is used a lot of time for football. There's a lot of time then, outside of that, that it's not used for the same degree of programming within there. Much the same way, the pool, there is a swim season, and then after that, there's a swan club and program season, and then outside of that, there's a lot of time that the pool would not be utilized at the same point, which increases the community accessibility options at that point.
I guess I do, I don't know, my voice, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that brought up another one, I think, so I think that was, that's important for summer. I think, I think you mentioned some organized swimming, swim classes, which I think is great, summertime availability, and you mentioned free time, like pool time, there will be some slots for free time for children, and also, the community room. Would that be something that people would use for yoga classes and exercise and type of things like that, or?
Well, and that's where we've, and, and like I said, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have more specifics on the layout of the venue itself. The multipurpose room we were looking at before, at this point, we're not looking at that opportunity, but I will tell you that we have an incredible amount of different areas within the district that the community can use, and quite honestly, they use a lot. Like, our schools and our gyms are used with great regularity, and people can always utilize those too. So we have a lot of different areas already that are used, but can be used too.
I guess I'd look for an explanation. What is the meaning of community room? I guess I'm not certain what all that involves to the public.
Which, are you identifying a particular point?
No, you just mentioned, we're going to build a pool with a community room.
No, I was saying, previously, we were looking at that. At this point, we're looking at the pool part of it, I'm sorry. I misstated that, and I didn't make that clear.
Mr. Poole, you look like you had a question?
Yeah, it's, thank you for the presentation, and this is a good idea. It's difficult without knowing exactly what you're putting into it, to give a full-throated, I can't wait to see what you're doing. And it sounds like you're going to make all those decisions, and then start building, before there's much feedback on whatever your final decision is. So I would ask, at the minimum, we put in a pool, this is just input, since opportunity give you that, this pool should be, the baseline is a pool for the school, for the kids, for the competition of the swimming team. And then after that, the community pitches in for whatever their uses are, I'm sure you can schedule that. So as a minimum standard, as opposed to values, are we going to get a certified competition pool? It doesn't necessarily need 1,000-seat stadium around it or anything like that, but a pool that the utilization of it by the swim team is going to meet all the standards of, that what they do is going to count, the lanes are wide enough, et cetera. And those are the basic things, I think, community members, when you're done with all the other things, we can adjust to, but that's one thing, if we, on the base price that we've raised our taxes for, don't get a competition pool that suits the needs of, full needs of the people that are going to use it, which is the swim team, that would be problematic, and I'd like for us to avoid that. So if we just start with that, and then you can do any other frills you want.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, and that's, that's why, as we were working on this, we were really identifying what the goals are, and that is absolutely a primary goal that we have always talked about, is making sure that it is a, an environment that is what's needed for our swim program, both the competitive part and the programs that our kids take part in. Because clearly, that is a significant portion of what the pool and what the Aquatic Center is, is needed. And I know from going to various events, both competition and programs at our current venue, and talking with our student-athlete tour swimmers, and some that have recently graduated, this is what they're looking for too. You know, they're looking for that strong environment that has the various, you know, touchpad scoreboard, you know, the, the higher level look of a venue for their competitions that they're competing in, which, you know, I believe that we're providing what is needed for our student-athletes for that.
Great. If we can provide that for the students, then I think everything else will be gravy.
Yes, I think, I think the positive is, we're providing that, and there's going to be good gravy for a lot of people to be able to take part in too.
Mr. Rambler, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, you indicate you're going to begin construction in August, should we presume that your funding is in place to be able to accomplish this pool, beginning to end, or are you still, are you still short of funding?
Well, I would say twofold. One, the funding between the district and the foundations is in place, but we're always willing to, additional funding to look at additional opportunities that we could do within the venue. So yes, we're ready to move that forward with the funding part of it, but we would always be open to look at accepting additional funding.
Great to hear. I know, I know what a tough fall this has been, and you've been doing it for, not just months, but for years, so congratulations on-
Thanks.
-getting that perhaps over the finish line. Second question I have is, what, what this commission has realized in talking about building a recreation center, is oftentimes, it's easy to construct something, it's more difficult to manage it. You folks have a plan in place to provide the management for the pool?
We do. So early on, as we developed our goals, we also developed an operations team, and part of that effort was to go out to neighboring districts and districts beyond neighboring districts to look at those that have pools that are competitive pools, but also used by the community as well. So we've gone to a number of different sites. The one that I think of a lot is Lakewood. We went out there and were able to see how they do it, and how, the lessons they've learned. You know, one of the greatest things is, they tell you the good things, they tell you the potential challenges that might come about too, and things to avoid, so. And we've been able to get a lot of their information back, in their handbooks, in their manuals that they utilize. So yes, we are prepared. I will say that you're right, though, that maintaining it, the management of it, is a challenge part of it, and we're always looking for partnerships to be part of that, so we can work collaboratively together, because everybody can do a little bit, which will make it easier for everyone not to carry the same degree of a load. Also, part of the education foundation is there, early on, they wanted to create some funding that lives on, so that if there are needs within the Aquatic Center, that there can be funding available for that, for the maintain part of it. So I think that that was really valuable thought that individuals had long before I was here to consider that as well.
Great, thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Two points. Thank you for being here, Mr. Rambler. I think that this presentation is very important, it's very timely, because as you know, the city is considering a rec center, and there's a little bit of confusion out there. Understandably, people only have so much time to pay attention to, to government issues, they hear the city schools, they hear the city, they kind of conflate those two from time to time. So the schools are building a pool, indoor pool, the city's not building an indoor pool. And as we can see from the numbers that you have, there's no- as we can see from the numbers that you have, there's no way that we could afford an indoor pool as part of the rec center. That would be a whole new second rec center that we'd be funding. So, um, I, I think it's just an opportunity to make that point, that, um, you know, we'd like to have some water amenities, outdoor water amenities. We'll see if we can find that in the budget, but this, but our project does not include an indoor pool. So we really want you to be successful, and we, we hope you're successful, because I think that's gonna provide an important opportunity for community use. And I think that we, as a commission, can be pretty satisfied that there will be community use, because I understand that a number of the foundations that have pledged their support, um, have also requested as part of that, uh, an ironclad community use agreement. So whenever that is finished, I'm sure we'll have a take, a chance to take a look at that, but I know that the, the foundations are gonna lead that effort, and so I feel pretty comfortable without needing to know what the particular details are. Um, I have some sympathy for what, uh, what you and the district have gone through, your predecessor, um, just in coming, just in doing any of the things that the city builds, and we build a fair number of things. Um, you can't have a project that's all things to all people, and you need to make choices in order to be able to fit things within a realistic budget and be responsible in your government expenditures. So, um, I, I applaud you for wrestling this thing to the ground, and, uh, wish you luck as you come across the finish line.
If I, if I can, real quick, I, I agree with you, and I think that's part of the challenge, and as Mr. Poole had mentioned too, it's making sure that we're providing for the needs that we have. Um, and I think for the district and the competitive part and the programs, but then also, you know, the teaching students and kids in general to swim and people in general, but then also the community part. I think that it's a nice fusion of those different goals that are able to be done. Um, but part of it is, is having, um, very honest and direct and consistent communication with folks who want hot tub or whatever it might be, and, but we have to talk about it, and, you know, I try to be really open and available to people and be very honest about it, and not let them hear different messages. So I think that's, that's incredibly important. The other point you made, which I think is really valuable, is that with the education foundation, having an MOU around community access, which, um, Barb I know would tell you that is almost completely done and gonna be signed off very quickly, um, which I think is very important. So that way, everybody, um, the donors and any other interested parties can feel very comfortable about that part of it. Um, but as I had mentioned too, I think to Mr. Waddington, that, you know, there is a lot of time that the pool can be accessible for the community. As with any of our venues, you know, our bas- our basketball courts and our gymnasiums, the amount of time that other people are using those, I, people I know don't know the particulars, but it would blow you away to know how much time those venues are open to other people, and, um, the community utilizes them, which I think is that unique partnership as a district, community, city, all coming together to provide for our citizens and our students and our families. So I think that's, that's, that unique partnership.
Mr. Ramblor, this city and specifically this commission has partnered with the schools, and the schools have partnered with us on so many economic development projects in the, in the nine and a half years that, that I've been sitting here. Uh, this is an opportunity, again, for us to partner with you, and I think we found a way to do that, and we're gonna continue to find a way to, to be a part of this. This is a, this is a terrific asset for our city, terrific asset for our school system. Uh, it, it always is encouraging to me that whenever we hire and employ, at any of my companies, the second thing they ask me after it's, "How much are they going to make?", is, "How good is your school system? And, and what kind of amenities do your school system have?" This is one more piece of the puzzle for me to answer that question and solidify, you know, another, another person of employment in our company. So I see this is really a positive for the entire community.
I, I would absolutely agree, and I, you know, I've, I've had this unique opportunity, um, to come into the community, not being part of the community, and I keep telling people this, you know, Mr. Harris has heard me say this before, but you see it, you know, fresh and new, and, um, this is a really special place. I, I keep telling folks that there are phenomenally good people here, and there's a sense of, um, people coming together to help others, and they care about each other, and, um, that ability to work together. It's very unique. You don't see that everywhere. Um, and the amount of support that you find, the other part I'll say is, we have phenomenal kids in our district. Like, I, I spend a lot of time in our buildings and around our kids, and we have really good kids in Sandusky who are outdoing amazing things in the community and in their lives as they move forward, and that is a reflection, I think, upon their families, but then the community as a whole as well. We've, we've got a really good place here.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Thank you.
If not, thanks for being here.
No problem. Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Ramblor, I will tell you, as I tell most guests, we do a presentation, you, you get a, a free pass to get out of here. You don't have to sit around for seven more pieces of legislation.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation? Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Without objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, those communications are accepted. Commissioners, surprisingly enough, we have no items on the consent agenda this evening. I was hoping to have one.
Again.
We will move to the regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you present item number one, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested a resolution be passed adopting the tax buzz budget for the city of Sandusky for the calendar year 2024, authorizing the submission of the tax budget to the Erie County Auditor, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, do you call the rule on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed expanding the designated outdoor refreshment area in downtown Sandusky, establishing requirements to ensure public health and safety within such area, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your play?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I, I see Mr. Lynch back there, and, um, I, I love his establishment and his products. I think I would be reluctant to take one of his drinks out, though, out of fear that I would spill the good stuff. So, uh, this, I, I, I love, I love the expansion of the, of the, of the area. I think it's been a wonderful addition to downtown Sandusky. The use of it, for those who are, are not familiar with the Dora, is modest. We don't have that many people walking around with Dora cups, but, um, it's been a nice addition, and so I wish you continued. Good luck, Mr. Lynch.
Gosh, I was concerned you were going to, uh, say that you were conflicted because your drinking is establishment. If that were the case, we'd all be conflicted. Additional discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I, uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this, obviously, but I, I think that, uh, as things move forward, maybe Mr. Horstman, I don't see him tonight, but, or someone that would be involved, that should kinda monitor to this, uh, development, because I was downtown late one night after eleven, which very rarely happens, I'm in the museum bed by ten, but, so I, I was down there, and what I noticed was, one, our Dora regulations allow it to midnight, and, uh, I, I look at the, uh, the mission or whatever creating Dora, it was, to encourage people to explore other areas of the city, be able to walk outside and look throughout the downtown. But, uh, I would say after eleven, I saw numerous people sitting on curbs and in the Mylander Plaza with a Dora cup and a bottle of tequila and pouring it in the cups. And they were not patronizing the establishment, say, I, I don't wanna say anything now. I mean, if the, if the, if the operators of the bars downtown are happy with it, that's fine, but, uh, what I see is, I think it should end at eleven with our noise ordinance. Our noise ordinances are eleven. I think eleven's a little more reasonable hour than midnight. Well, once, nothing ever happens really good after midnight anyway, so I, I, I would say that, uh, exploring our town and seeing people taking tequila out of a bag and dumping it in a Dora cup is not something that, uh, leaves with a good taste in your mouth. So, I, I would just say, just with Mr. Horstman, visit the, uh, operators of the bars and owners, and make sure that everything's working, and, uh, there are no problems. There were no problems, everybody was being nice, but they weren't exploring, and they weren't patronizing the bars.
Something to look at.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I, I wonder if the, the Mike, Chief Oliver, a chance to weigh in. Uh, I have not seen or heard of many problems with Dora, and I'm fairly confident that if one of, uh, the chief's, uh, officers observes someone pouring tequila into a Dora cup, uh, they might have a word with them about whether that's, uh, activity to be encouraged.
Chief, what's your, what's your experience with that?
Well, through you, Commissioner President, and the rest of the commissioners, um, to your situation, Commissioner Meinter, if you, if you call us or somebody reports that it's an open container, uh, we'll, we'll issue the appropriate citation for that. We have had no issues whatsoever with the Dora. We've had no complaints the first couple of weeks. It, it was a matter of, uh, something new and, and seeing it and what it's gonna look like, and, and since then, none. And I, I speak with the business owners pretty frequently and haven't heard any complaints, so. But, yes, to your point, if we come across somebody at Mylander sitting on a bench and pouring an open bottle of tequila in a cup, whether it says Dora or not, we will handle that.
Okay, great. Additional discussion, Commissioner? Dr. Smires, would you call a rule on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Erie County Housing Opportunities Incorporated for the Sandusky Bay Pathway, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a rule on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Strand Associates Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the Churchwell Park Recreation Improvements and MacArthur Park Roadway and Utility Improvements Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your play?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. John.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section fourteen of the city's charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I wonder if you might ask Mr. Klein if he would just put this in some context? I mean, we're all anxious to get going on the South Side Plan, but there's some preliminary steps that need to be taken, and there are some issues that we, um, you know, we have some great advantages being a legacy city. We've got tremendous assets that have been here for sometimes centuries. Um, but there are some liabilities that come along sometimes of being a legacy city, and I wonder if he could just put some of that in context, Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Through the Commission President, um, in Churchwell Park, which is, uh, the actual, uh, park area out there in the greater MacArthur Park District, in that Churchwell Park, there are actually sewer and water lines that were installed many years ago. They run through the center of the park, and they really need to be relocated. We don't know if the relocation should be behind the houses, staying in the park, because that's least impactful to the residents. We won't have to get in and reroute private sewer and water service lines. Uh, we don't know if it makes more sense to put those utilities inside the right-of-way, along Forest Drive, Parkview, and all those other forest drives that are out there. But the goal is going to be to, uh, relocate those to where they are the most effective to also accommodate the park plan for that entire, uh, Churchwell Park area. The hope is to be able to utilize the funding that was made available, and, and this project, this preliminary and conceptual design project will be funded through the grant that the, uh, uh, Health Department has provided to the city. But the future phase is, we do have a split of around $900,000 for the park, so we need to do conceptual design of that as well, figure out what exactly will be able to be included for that funding in the park, and then make sure that we're not, uh, putting the utilities in the way of any of, of the space that we wanna use. And, and one thing I can say as well is, with the efforts through the planning and economic development departments over the past six, seven, eight years of purchasing properties, demolishing properties, it's really opened up sightlines and really opened up other opportunities. As you could see, within that South Side Plan, there are several other opportunities, and it's given us the possibility to locate the playgrounds, locate any splash pads and things like that that need to be located out there in the appropriate spots while also moving those utilities. We do have, uh, a couple hu- million dollars available to relocate those utilities as well, so, uh, we're very hopeful that we can do the entire project within that, also increasing the capacity and eliminating some of those really, really, really small water lines that are out there.
Mr. Chairman, well, I'm, I'm curious, Mr. Klein, and I don't know if you would know the answer to this question. Uh, this was well before your time and my time. I'm, I'm just curious as to how we ended up with utility lines in the middle of a park. Um, I don't know if this was part, I mean, I'm imagining this was part of the need to rapidly move, uh, to support the development of munitions during World War II, and that we just, federal government used the land that they found, and there was a sewer line underneath it, and so what? Uh, that's what they were gonna do. Do you know that history, or is that something we don't necessarily know anymore?
Yes, through the Commission President, that's my understanding as well. That's what, uh, the research that's been presented to me was, was that those, excuse me, those sewer and water lines were installed back then, and then the buildings were constructed over top of, like, one of the sewer lines actually has a building constructed directly over top of it. It was a duplex that was out there, and I think it may have been actually demolished, purchased and demolished, but, uh, those water lines were three-quarter-inch lines. That's what you normally service a house with. We do have larger lines that were installed to supply, uh, enough pressure and flow for the hydrants, so there is fire safety measures that have been taken, but, uh, what's actually supplying the residences out there is not a sufficient size. Uh, I think EPA won't allow anything under a four-inch anymore, and we've been systematically trying to eliminate those, and this is the next one. This is, this project is, is hugely important to the community out there, to planning, to the city as a whole, but it's also important to me overseeing the utilities to eliminate these small lines that do cause problems for us, for the residents, for everybody. And being that they're a hundred, over a hundred years old, uh, it's important for us to, to get those reconstructed and in the right place. And this isn't even something that we can line those water lines. They need to be replaced, so we can make sure that we're giving the residents out there the best and what they deserve.
Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call a rule on motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
And now on your.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager Incorporated of Monroeville, Ohio, for the Meg Street Reconstruction and Multi-Use Path Project in the amount of $41,646.13 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, you've held this change order at about, by calculations, about two and a half percent. That's pretty darn good.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. One of the big items actually for this change order is something that, you know, when we do these older parts of the city, we don't know what we're going to encounter when we start digging, and what we actually found was an old, the old interceptor sewer that was installed in the early 1900s that was still connected to our new interceptor, and it was bringing lake water in. So that's why there's over $14,000 of this change order is with sewer money, because we found that as part of this project and were able to eliminate. And that's going to eliminate a lot of the I and I and really help. It's also leading us to do more investigation on that old interceptor sewer to see if we have any other issues with illicit connections like this that could cause problems at the wastewater treatment plant. Other than that, the majority of the project overruns were just asphalt-based, just quantities related to construction, making sure that we did the project right.
Great, good catch. Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Klein, just take a moment. As I read this, I realize for expedience, expediency, we changed to PVC pipe, and I have some concerns about the health risks associated with it, with using PVC pipe, and just wanted to hear where we're at on this, and are we going to continue doing this? Or, that's just a sure stop, I have some concerns about doing that. I think we should be putting in the best material available and...
Yeah. Through the Commission President, most of our projects that we do are with ductile iron pipe. In this case, when we bid the project, it was nearly impossible to get the ductile iron pipe. They were actually projecting over a year out to get the steel pipe instead of the plastic pipe unless we went to a different size, and then there were cost implications associated with that as well. And at the time, it was really strange where some of the PVC pipe was available in certain sizes and some of the steel pipe was available in other sizes. So, in this case, we decided to move forward with the project utilizing the PVC pipe. But like I said, in most situations, we're specking out the ductile iron. EPA has approved PVC, but, I mean, I do know that they're starting to do some studies and looking into it. I mean, in the past, there were lead pipes that were approved, and now we're going back and trying to correct that. You know, all of the other, there were asbestos-lined cement pipes that were used. Can't imagine anybody providing that these days. But, you know, these are all things, the ductile iron is something that our crews enjoy working with, it's stuff that we stock regularly, and that's our primary type and material that we would prefer to use on our projects. But that being said, I can't say that we haven't used PVC in other locations.
Okay. For the Commission, going forward, I think we need to seriously look at ways to ensure that we're using ductile iron pipe going forward. He hit all the right buttons, lead pipe, et cetera. These are things that it's easy enough to say to save money. Well, nobody's going to know whether or not it's really dangerous for another 50 years, but we see when science, where science is today, if they're telling us that PVC pipe is unhealthy, along with the fact, I believe that was one of the issues, that isn't the county still engaged in a lawsuit over a broken ductile pipe? Not ductile, but I mean PVC, that the problem they had out on the east side with Spear Brothers. I think that was PVC, I believe that was PVC pipes, that they're now arguing over whether or not it was the county's fault or the contractor's fault. If anyone has ever, ever skied extensively, and you recognize what happens when boots get really, really cold and they're old, if you've ever seen a pair of boots disintegrate on somebody while they're skiing, it's because of the material. It doesn't last as long under certain circumstances. And I think with the money that we have and the federal government's providing a lot of money for infrastructure, we should be planning well ahead so that we can do this appropriately. So, just hope that's, we can do that.
Mr. Smarts, you call a rule on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Smarts, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Street Rehabilitation Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners having heard this ordinance, what is your play?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. As far as you call a rule on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as you present the last item, might have number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a 2026 Suffolk Custom Pumper with custom Suffolk Monarch Extreme Duty chassis through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program from Suffolk Corporation of Dublin, Ohio, for the Fire Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners having heard this ordinance, what is your play?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinzler.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second, and how appropriate it is, former chief makes a motion, almost a million bucks on a truck.
A million dollars is crazy, though.
Wait three years.
I used to buy them for 350.
Chief, I, believe me, that's not an insult. That was 20 years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Discussion, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I want to congratulate Chief D'Amico, because, Mr. Waddington, see if you've got a recollection that's different from mine, but I've been on this commission for 12 and a half years, and I don't remember a single occasion where anyone else ever outspent engineering in a single night, and you did it tonight.
Only in one meeting.
Only one meeting.
Excellent. I guess I always have angst over the length of time that it's going to take to get the truck. Do you, I mean, do you think that's realistic? I mean, can we wait? I guess we can wait, but we're going to have to wait, aren't we?
To President Brady, our scheduled time to replace this specific vehicle was 2025. So, when we picked up our last engine, they told us they were, had a three-year waiting list, and, you know, that the price had obviously skyrocketed, so we kind of jumped on specking out another one right away so that we could afford to wait that timeframe. So, we're not that far off from what our normal replacement schedule said we were supposed to replace it.
We don't have to pay them until we get it, do we?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll be going.
Well, hopefully we'll be still on this earth, but we might be removed from this table. So, I understand prices have gone up about 50% in two years. Does that sound about right?
We, pretty close to that.
Okay.
The last one was $642,000.
It was two years ago or three?
That was ordered in 2021.
And, okay.
And we just got it this year.
Yeah.
So, not only have the prices gone up, but the timeframes have gone up. We looked at some, some other departments that have purchased some different brands, and they're pretty much all in the same ballpark. The engines we currently have, Pierce's, are around about a million dollars. Perkins is buying one that they ordered a while back for what their price is going to come out between 800 and 900,000 for theirs. So, we're not really getting an extravagant price for this.
No, I'm sure, and it's part of the state's purchasing program, so we've got the best price we're going to get, we can be assured of that. But I'm just a little bit curious about what's going on in the market. I mean, I, I don't know how many companies build fire trucks. I don't know if they're dozens around the country, or two or three, or, and what is this, what is it that's driving the increases? I mean, I know, I know everything's up, but not much is up 50% in two years. Any thoughts?
I don't really know what the exact reason is. The only thing I can tell you is that when we were going through the process with the, with the last pumper that we had, they said that all the parts manufacturers were jacking the prices up as they were going along, and we were already locked into a price. So, they had to eat a lot of that, and they're obviously probably making up for that now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would be interested to know, Mr. Smarts, how long it took you to learn how to pronounce that name. Fuck a pan. You did well, did very well. Better than the chemical was.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just like to say thank you to Chief D'Amico, that was the, having the foresight to recognize the order this well in advance so that we would be able to have the equipment when we need it. So, that's important, planning far, far out, good vision, thank you.
Here, here.
Yes. Mr. Smarts, you call a rule on the motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. We have two donations, one from our Sandusky Rec. Would like to thank John Arnold for his donation of a $50 gift card to Pizza House East. We get a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Objection, the motion be approved. Here's no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks, Mr. Arnold.
Donation of $20 for the K-9 Fund was received from the Fraternal Order of Police, Lake Erie Lodge 17. Forget a motion to accept that donation.
I move.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Objection, that motion be approved. Here's no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. I was informed earlier last week that Mr. Hyal, our astute law director, will be resigning his position as law director. That is effective July 21st. We appreciate him taking time to stay on so that Ms. Reader has some guidance while I'm gone. But Brennan's a, you know, key member of our staff and advises all the city staff and commission, and I just want to thank him for nearly three years of service to the city. I've been working with him quite more closely over the last eight months, and he definitely has a passion for government, for the city of Sandusky. Always was willing to help staff, participated in many, many meetings, and so I want to thank him for his years of service and wish him well in his new endeavors. And if you want to say a few words?
Sure. I don't know how I'm going to follow that up. That was a lot of very nice praise, so thank you, John. I just, I just really want to say thank you to you all, to staff, to the residents, to pretty much everyone who's been involved with the city of Sandusky. It's been a true pleasure coming to work for almost three years, and that's due to the fact that really this is, I'm going to get through this, this is really a special place. It's becoming a second home to me and Kelly, and it is, I'm going to miss it a lot. And, yeah, I can't wait to see all the continued success and all the hard work pay off over the years, and I look forward to visiting many, many, many times throughout my life. And so, thank you all for the time, the opportunity, and the friendship, and wonderful, almost three years here.
Mr. Hyal, I want to personally thank you for your, for your service to this community. Three years goes by like a blink of an eye, and you and the Law Department, Paige and Sarah are such a, have been such an important cog in our wheel. When I think of the things that we've accomplished in this city, the time that you've been here, nothing can be done without your looking at it. We've relied on you, and you've guided us, you've guided us very judiciously in so many occasions. And on almost every project that we've taken on, we have 20 questions or more for you. And you did not shoot from the hip. If you did not have the answer, you found the answer out for us. If we didn't like the answer, it didn't matter, we still got the right answer. So, thank you for your service to us, and, boy, good luck, good luck going forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
No, I, as a fellow lawyer, I want to say that Mr. Hyal has been a lawyer's lawyer. He's been a counselor's counselor to us. You've done a great job, as Mr. Brady indicated. It hasn't been a shoot-from-the-hip kind of thing. It's, it's always been, you know, I'm not really quite sure about that when you're weren't sure about it. You'll get back to us, and you were very prompt, you followed up, you always did what you said you were going to do. And, you know, the speed at which this city has been moving, that's difficult to do. You are, and have been, an integral part of the team, as Mr. Orzak indicated, and you've made us feel very comfortable that we could step in places that we didn't yet know, try new things, try different ways, because we had good counsel that, that allowed us to be able to have the confidence that we needed to make those decisions. So, you know, it's not just, I want the public to understand that we're talking about a law director, it's not just talking about, you know, getting advice and dotting the i's and crossing the t's, it's having all of us as decision-makers feel comfortable that we can take a risk. There are risks, and there are things that don't come out the way we want them to, that's the nature of the business. That doesn't mean that we didn't get good advice, it just means that courts decided something this way or that way, they changed precedent, all those kinds of things can happen as you move through something as complicated as what a city does. But you've been a great, you've been a great advocate for us, and you'll be very deeply missed. I've looked, I've known a lot of people in the position, and no one's done it as well as you, no one's done it better than you. We've had other good folks, no one's done it better.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I always appreciated Mr. Hyal and his advice and the fact that you were always accessible. And to me, accessibility is a big thing when you have a law director and you're, you're able to go and, and talk to him and get his advice. And you were always decisive when it came to the planning commission, and that was, that was a help, because the planning commission can be a handful, as you know. So, I'll, I'll miss you and good luck to you in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Mr. Hyal as well. I worked with a lot of law directors over the last, you know, 30, 40 years, but a lot of them were not present, you know, for a lot of the things that we go through. And I have to say, Mr. Hyal put in a lot of hours. He was at planning, zoning, housing appeals, after-hours committee, citizens committee groups, so I was pretty impressed that he'd show up at most of those meetings and put on some long days, and I want to thank him.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Just like to say thanks. Good luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
All right.[1700.76]
of hours. He was at planning, zoning, housing appeals, after-hours committee, citizens committee groups. So I was pretty impressed that he'd show up and put most of those meetings and put on some long days, and I want to thank him.
Thank you.
Mr. Waddington?
Just like to say thanks. Good luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Harris? Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks, and much like, you know, everyone else said, just, just simply just being there and offering the prompt responses and sound advice, you know, when needed. So again, as, as everyone else said, we wish you the absolute best. And, yeah, let's, let's keep in touch.
Thank you, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hyal, where will you be, where will you be working in the future?
Sure. I will be joining a law firm, Brick or Grade, and still doing municipal and economic development work. Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're good.
Thank you.
George.
Because of the critical role of the law director, and while we begin to search for a new law director, I have asked Justin Harris to again serve the city as interim law director. Justin has graciously accepted this offer. Justin previously served as law director and interim law director back in 2020. He will be able to keep the city moving forward during his transition and can hit the ground running. I would ask for a motion to appoint Justin Harris as interim law director beginning July 24th. If approved tonight, formal legislation and a contract will be presented at the next commission meeting on July 24th.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second discussion. Mr. Barris, will you call the roll on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
And the last item is the next Finance Committee meeting will be on Friday, July 21st, 2023, 8:00 a.m. at City Hall. That concludes my report for the evening.
Comments or questions for the city manager, Commissioner? Now we'll turn to items of old business. Any of you have items of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sherman?
I do. I, last commission meeting, we had a presentation on the Rec Center, and I kind of want to compliment Mr. Rambler tonight that he brought in this update that I thought was very comprehensive. And, you know, I was out getting petitions signed, and being an incumbent now, it's a little different, because everybody's going to bend your ear about something. So the number one thing that I got into a lot of the conversations about was Airbnbs. You know, that was the number one. Two was the Rec Center. And I feel like, I mean, I didn't talk to one, one proponent of the Rec Center. They just, the people that I spoke to at, you know, Fort July or other events I attended, feel like they don't know enough about it, about what's going on or what they're getting for the money. I think that we were presented with like floor plans and, you know, certain phases from 13 million to 38 million. I think if that operation budget were to, or the election for the operation budget were to go through or win, it would take something like this to get people to understand what they're getting and what they're voting for, like their core values and everything are very descriptive. More, more than a floor plan, it's more of a narrative on exactly what you're buying. So I thought, I don't know if that might be something we, we need to get out before the vote.
Sure. Good suggestion. We'll share that suggestion with Mr. Meinzler. Additional, additional items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, just a footnote to Mr. Meinzler's comments on the transient housing. We are planning a meeting next week, and I think we're on the same page, and our next step will be to get with staff and, and make some recommendations from there.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I should, I'm sorry. I should say, you know, Steve and I started out together on the committee together, and we kind of butted heads. We were both at different ends of the spectrum. And I think we're moving closer together, and, and actually, he's winning, but, which makes me mad. No, I'm just kidding. But he's, he's started, yeah, we're still working on it, but he's, he's starting to convince me on certain aspects of it, so we are getting to a, I mean, it's still going to be a long time for we could break down a line-by-line item to be able to present to the commission, but we're starting to agree on some things.
Excellent. Well within the year and a half timeframe.
Yeah.
Additional items of old business? Now we moved items of new business. Do any of you have any items of new business? Under new business, I have asked for a special commission meeting to occur next Monday, July the 17th, to receive an update from our, the Slaven Group, our, our search committee on the city manager search. That meeting is scheduled for 5:00 p.m. in this chamber, and we will go into executive session for that meeting, and I'll ask for a motion at that time to do that. I won't ask for it tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
But to be clear, there is no, there is no action that's anticipated, anticipated to be at that meeting.
And there is, it's just one, one item only, and that is, that executive session.
We need a motion to set the meeting? Are we good?
We do not.
We're good? We're good, okay.
Any other items of new business? Any public comments on any item that pertains to city business? Please step to the podium, share this, your name, your address, and your comments. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.